Okay, all council members are accounted for. I ask Councilmember Lamone to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilmember Jensen to offer opening remarks.
[inaudible]
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, are there any modifications to the agenda?
Yes.
We have items, 10 C and D need to be continued indefinitely. We think they're going to be back in a couple of weeks, but at this point-
So, continued indefinitely?
Yes.
We had a question, is the livestream working and can everybody hear the microphones? It is?
According to what we have going, yes, it is recorded.
[inaudible]
Does anyone else have changes?
Just to note that Jason Hunter, that's doing his part of the presentation, has another commitment and he said he'll get here as soon as possible. We were thinking right around seven o'clock.
Okay, so he won't. We'll just, at that point, we'll get him in?
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, with those changes then, I'll ask for an approval on tonight's agenda.
Mayor, council, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as written with a continuation of items C and D indefinitely, 10 C and D, continued.
Second. We have a motion by Ben and a second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's have an open session. If there's an item that's not a public hearing on the agenda and you want to talk about it, please come up and state your name and address. Or if there's something that you want to talk about that's not on the agenda, same thing. And if you could limit your comments to about three minutes, that'd be great. Done. Okay, we'll close the open session and come back up here. Any comments on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent items.
I'll second it.
Motion by Eric, second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, we have no board commitment or committee and commission appointments this evening, presentations or public hearing items. So, we're on 10A to consider for adoption a resolution 2016-040 authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal Utah County CDBG agreement and providing for an effective date.
Mayor and council, the CDBG is the Community Development Block Grant. It's a federal program that funnels money back into cities and counties to do specific things with infrastructure. There's money for senior projects. They have some, what's that?
Elevators.
Elevators. They have a specific criteria that they use when it comes to allowing this money to be used. The CDBG money is funneled through MAG, which is the Mountain Land Association of Governments, an organization that we are a member of. They are the ones that take the applications and determine where that funding's going to go. So, there's a certain amount of funding available each year. This agreement that you have in front of us, in front of you, is to just renew that relationship to make sure that as we apply for these funds that we are a part of the CDBG program so that we can use them in the future. The latest CDBG money that we are in the process of receiving is the money for the library, for the elevator. And so, we do have a match that comes with that, but the CDBG money is the bulk of the money used for that. We've had a couple, as we were asking Dion, we had a couple of projects for our senior center, the actual building, the original building, and then also was remodeling the basement. We got some CDBG money for. And then, we determined that there was a sewer line at one point that was put in with the use of that money and, which is nice. In order for us to qualify for infrastructure projects, you have to verify the income level of the people that live in that area. So, there's a low-income component that comes with that. The sewer project we did was in relation to the trailer court, just off of Second South. So, those are examples of projects, but what you're taking action on tonight is the ability for us to continue to use this as a resource if we so choose.
So, did you say that this one was specific or general?
This is a general renewal of that relationship.
To participate?
Yes.
Okay.
Not specific to a project or dollar.
Any questions, council?
I've got a few.
This question, okay.
I've had residents ask me if there's restrictions or any obligations we have that we can't see. One of the things that I noticed, and I was hoping maybe Chief Smith could speak to this question, but one of the things I see in the resolution is this language about a policy prohibiting excessive use of law enforcement force against demonstrators. And I want to make sure-
You're on the wrong item, Councilmember Stanley. This is the CDBG grant. It's for housing and urban development money.
This one's 2016-040.
Task Force is the next one.
Are you looking at a different one perhaps?
I'm looking at 040.
Okay, what page?
Page one of two of the actual resolution. Maybe this is just a cutting and pasting error by staff, but there's a language in section two of this resolution that we're on item A. In section two, it talks about policies prohibiting the use of excessive force by law enforcement agencies within the city's jurisdiction against any individuals engaged in nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. Documentation, maybe I'm just- Well, this is the next one. This is the interlocal agreement. This is the resolution and it's here, policy prohibiting excessive force.
Yeah, the copy I have does-
Sorry, hey, we have Jessica from MAG here and maybe she can help answer that question, so.
Be great.
So, you are correct. That is a requirement of HUD, that that be a part of the interlocal agreement and this resolution. So, that is part of-
It is in this one. Okay.
Your police chief speak to that, but that is a requirement from HUD.
Yeah, and if, Mike, you have questions? I'm just curious if you've had a chance to think through that, if you're comfortable with the policy. I don't see the actual policy that we have against excessive force included in the, included with the resolution, but I see this language requiring us to have a policy. And I want to make sure you're comfortable with whatever policy we have. Wondering if we have a policy that could be provided in the future?
No, we have policies that cover use of force, which are not just specific to demonstrations, but to anything. And the case law of Graham versus Connor and down the road that it's based off of. So, our policies that we pay a company to go through and watch current case laws and everything else, state laws are very up-to-date and would be in compliance to what this is asking.
So, there's nothing, nothing new we need to do and we're comfortable with the language we've got?
Yeah.
Sorry, Ben, we were the crazy ones.
No, you're fine.
I thought you were talking about the major crimes task force.
No, I was just looking at that specific language.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions, Ben? Did you have more comments?
I've had people express to me a concern, let me get in the microphone here, a concern that with, and this, I guess, goes into item B, but these are related, right? A and B are related?
No, they're separate.
Do we know who has signed a resolution like this, who participates in the EDBG money?
We'll let Jessica answer that.
Thanks, Jessica.
So, MAG administers this program on behalf of Utah County. As an urban county, they're entitled to grants from HUD. And so, that applies to all the cities and towns in Utah County excluding Provo, Orem and Lehigh, who receive their own grants because of their population size. So, these resolutions are entered into by all the cities and towns in the county, with a few exceptions who have opted out of the program.
You know why some have opted out?
I believe it's just the political stance about taking federal funding.
Okay. One of the concerns I've heard from the public is this idea that there are larger cities that don't participate. What is the threshold that you have to have in population to not participate?
I believe it's 50,000. So, Provo, Orem and Lehigh-
Can you explain an entitlement city and what that means?
Yeah, so, all it means is that you've reached that 50,000 threshold and have made the decision to pull out of a different CDBG program. So, Utah County at one point was part of Utah's small cities CDBG program that was done through the state. Once it became large enough population-wise, we pulled out. You get more direct funding that way and you don't have to go with some of the administrative burden of the state program. And then, once Provo, Orem and Lehigh reached that threshold, they separated as well so that they could fund just in their communities. So, we cover all the other cities and towns that haven't reached that.
So, they, Provo, the entitlement cities get a check cut each year of CDBG money that they don't necessarily have to match or apply for, or is it just, in a sense, a grant directly to them?
It's a grant directly to Provo. So, what Utah County does, you have the option of managing those grants in-house, but Utah County grants them to sub recipients, which is what the cities would be.
So, one of the concerns, I guess, when people have a political concern with federal money, it's typically over the possible strings that are attached. Do you have any sense of what those strings are with this CBDG money?
There are some regulations that we have to follow, but that's something that we manage at MAG. Again, it's the LMI, the Low and Moderate Income Qualifications, that we have to ensure that we're following to use grant money. When we do construction projects, we have to follow Department of Labor regulations for wages paid and things like that. But those are the burdensome regulations. So, we have to do environmental reviews for each of our projects. So, those kinds of things.
Okay, thanks.
Any issues there or just general questions?
General questions. I think I've heard concerns from the public and so it may justify a more further discussion, a more thorough conversation about whether or not we want to take the same stance on the political question that other cities have taken by not participating. There's certainly benefits and there's a lot of value in us being involved for the grant money, but there's also strings that could potentially-
Just one other thing I want to make clear. When you do sign into this, it's a three-year agreement that makes you eligible to receive grants, but you aren't required to submit any application. So, it just makes it possible if you do want to come for a grant award one year to be eligible to do that, but you're not required.
And if we don't apply for any grants, we don't have to comply with any of the regulations.
Correct. Scott, you said this paid for the elevator, is that right?
Yeah.
Matched?
Yeah, I mean, we matched a certain percentage of that, but the bulk of the money was from the CDBG. And that's, I mean, it's an example of a project that if we had it fully funded as a city, probably would have put us back a few years.
So, I've actually sat in on meetings in the past where the grants are administered and there's a committee. It's actually a subcommittee of certain mayors. The county involves, but Provo and Orem and now Lehigh do not participate in that. They all apply by a certain date. And the kinds of things that are applied for, the ones I remember were, well, I don't remember this one because I didn't sit in on this one, but it was like a sewer project or a street mapping system for Fairfield. Any, any kind of project that involves the low-income housing where, not the low-income housing, but the low-income individuals, where there's an infrastructure project that they wouldn't normally be able to afford all at once on their own. And so, they come up with what they can. And then, there's criteria that has to be met in order for them to qualify. And then, after all of that's met, then there's a numerical process that's assigned to each one of them and then they're ordered. And then, there's a designation of how many of those are going to get approved. And so, it kind of rotates through also depending on the number of applicants and whether they received one the prior year or not. Now, maybe those criteria have changed, but that's pretty much what it is. And we haven't really run into any issues or concerns through that process with the quote-unquote "strings attached" at this point in time, at least nothing onerous that we're aware of. Would you say that's?
That's-
And I was there when the other cities separated from, you know, when it was changed from a state-run to a county and then the cities separated from it.
Beyond the three that are separated by virtue of their population limit, do we have a list of the other cities that have opted out for philosophical reasons?
There's only two. They're not large cities, so they're smaller. We haven't had any large cities. I don't remember specifically which two they were. I think contributing to that is their higher-income cities, so they don't see a lot of benefit in the program.
Okay. I could probably guess which ones they are, but I'll leave that out of the minutes for now.
We've all thought of them.
We'll just, we'll just leave them out of the minutes. They can all speculate now if they're watching. Does that help?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm comfortable, especially on the express, you know, representation that it's just an option that it grants us to apply for certain things.
That's exactly right.
I'm comfortable with it.
Counsel, any other discussion on this item? I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to adopt resolution 2016-040, authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal Utah County CDBG agreement and providing for an effective date.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Sid and a second by Diana by voice. Eric?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, now, we're going to move to item 10B, which is to consider for adoption a resolution 2016-041, authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal cooperative agreement with Utah County, Provo City, Orem City, American Fork City, Alpine City, Spanish Fork City, Santa Quin City, Lehigh City, Springville City, Payson City, Mapleton City, Salem City, Saratoga Springs City, Linden City, Highland City, City of Cedar Hills, Lone Peak Facility Safety, Public Safety District regarding the Utah County Mayor Crimes Task Force, Major Crimes Task Force, and providing for an effective date. Chief?
Mayor and council, this is an agreement that we've been part of the task force. Honestly, I'm not sure how long, as long as I've been an officer with Pleasant Grove, so over 22 years. But the essence of the task force is they deal mainly with the illegal production, manufacture, sale and use of controlled substances and gang activity as well as large-scale crimes. So, we're able to utilize a task force for all of these operations. If there's a, even if there's a big, a large-scale crime in the city, we have the availability of the task force and all of their detectives. Typically, how it works is each of those cities that you've just mentioned gives officers or donates officers to the task force. Pleasant Grove does have one officer on the task force full-time. Some of the larger cities have more than one officer on the task force.
Who is it from our city?
Chad Pedersen is on the task force. And so, they're, they're assigned there for usually a couple of years at a time and then we'll rotate someone else in there. But it's a great asset to the city. They're able to get involved in high-scale drug activities dealing with drug trafficking organizations, large-scale organizations that they're doing. They're, they're conducting operations that really we just don't have the resource, manpower or technology to operate. And they're able to get into some of these larger organizations and do some, some high-level damage to their organizations. And in the past, I usually try at least on a yearly basis to read back some of the numbers that, of drugs they've taken off the streets. And it's always in the millions of dollars of drugs that they've taken off the streets of our county.
Chief, I think we recently had a fairly significant bust in our area, in our own city, that, that involved the Major Crimes Task Force. Can you refresh our memories on?
I don't know which one you're referring to. We have them all the time.
I know, I'm thinking of the one that-
I know, this has shocked everybody that it happened all the time.
I'm thinking of the one that involved, I believe it was like cocaine and some other controlled substances. And it was, again, one of these substantial dollar values.
Yeah, I'm not sure which one you're talking to. In the, in the recent, we've had, we've had a couple that, that dealt with labs. There's a new thing coming about with marijuana use. And we've got a bunch of terminology out there that everybody's referring to these things. It's, they're called dab labs and there's all sorts of other things. But basically, we've had a couple labs taken down in the, in the city where they're using, they're taking marijuana, they're using a lab process that's, that's pretty dangerous and volatile. It requires the use of a high amount of butane. But basically, they're, they're pulling the THC out of the marijuana. So, if you, and I'm off the top of my head here, so, you know, you go back to maybe, okay, the mayor's days, right? And this, I don't know.
I'm from Hawaii, so I'm sure it's reached here by now.
I'll give you some terminology that you're familiar with, you know, like Maui Wowie.
It was invented in Hawaii. Go ahead.
So, some of this, the, the really good marijuana that, you know, people are willing to spend a lot of money for, had a THC content of typically in the 20%. These dab labs, when they're done, the finished product has a THC content in the 90%. And they're, they're getting it down to what, what looks like even a tar or a resin. It's gummy. They're putting it in food. They're putting it in candies. And you're getting a lot of overdoses from it because people are using it and they're getting more THC into their system than what they thought they were getting. So, we've had a couple labs taken down in Pleasant Grove. We've had a couple others. I'm trying to remember the one you're, they're, we had a couple recently that were through the mail, where we took down some people that were bringing stuff in through the postal service. We've had a couple that, that were, I can't remember the specifics on the one you're referring to. Did it involve a car and some car seizures and some other things?
I'm thinking of, it was just a couple months ago. And you, you mentioned it in meeting. It's okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I can't remember what they're talking about. But they are, our involvement in that task force is very beneficial to the citizens of Pleasant Grove. There is a, there's a handful of chiefs who sit on the board of directors of that. I sit on the board of directors for the task force. And so, we're very involved in it and we definitely get our bang for the buck for our involvement in that task force.
Questions for the chief?
So, I'm looking at the interlocal agreement again. And I'm seeing throughout it, every major paragraph, it talks about the CDBG program. So, this, the major task force is funded through the grant that we just talked about in the previous item. Is that right?
They, they will go after several different grants. And depending on which they're going after it, there's funding through state and federal grants. There's also funding through asset forfeitures. And then, there's also funding through the agencies that participate paying into it. So, they have multiple funding streams for the task force.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I'm just seeing it all throughout the first six paragraphs of the interlocal agreement references to the CDBG program.
And do they change the, the city that's in charge of it every year? Like, does it rotate?
No, typically-
It's always Orem?
No, and I'm not seeing what you're referring to, Ben, but-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know what you're talking about, honestly.
I'm looking at the interlocal agreement itself, not the resolution to sign it, but the interlocal agreement.
So, can you give us like which page and?
Yeah, I'm looking at the packet, so it's not in the same, but it's page number two, three, four of the interlocal cooperation agreement. And I'm looking at paragraphs-
Are you sure you're on the, the next one down?
Well, he was right last time. That's why I wanted you real careful on how I, okay, witnesses and those are the wherashes. And now, we're in sections one, two, three. Do you know what section?
I'm past the therefore. I'm looking at the paragraphs, the numbered paragraphs. Beyond, past the therefore, paragraph one, two, three, four, five, six and seven, I'll talk about the CBD, CDBG grant program.
Okay, we must be in two different sections then. I'm gonna jump forward.
There aren't numbered paragraphs that I see. I just see section one.
There's sections.
That says effective date and duration and section two, administration of agreement.
This is what I have. So, last time it was the resolution.
Right.
This time, it's the actual agreement. So, here's the interlocal agreement that I see.
On the- What was right before this one? Do you have the?
Yeah, that was number 040.
This is the actual agreement number, the interlocal cooperation agreement number 2016-. This is different language here, so this isn't the same agreement.
The CBDG was first on that packet and then- Right. In the packet, it's clear, but the one I'm looking at, which is the one we will execute, right? I'm not able to find exactly what he's referring to. And this, I-
Doesn't mean he's not right. It's just I can't find-
I printed this out of the packet right before I came in and I don't, I don't know what you're referring to.
And I may be in the wrong place. Appreciate it.
It's possible, Ben, but you found the last one. That's why I'm not doubting it.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or concerns on this discussion?
So, there's a board of directors and then there's the cities. Do they just rotate?
No, typically, we don't rotate. It was, the, the task force used to be financially based out of Pleasant Grove. That's been-
Fifteen.
At least 15 years ago. And ever since then, it shifted over to Orem City where they've held the financial responsibility. They supply-
Full-time secretary, treasurer.
Yes.
Wow.
To, to do that. And also, the sheriff's office shares in the administration of responsibilities for that. So, they, they have a full-time lieutenant. There's full-time lieutenant from sheriff's office, full-time lieutenant from Orem PD and a full-time secretary from Orem PD that administratively function in that task force.
The other term that you might want to, that you would be interested in is the fact that we can withdraw at any time with no financial penalty. So, just, so you know that, make that clear.
Yeah, I saw that.
At this particular point in time, my, my recollection is that the city participates. Our participation is somewhat minimal, but the benefit both to, to us as citizens in the county and specifically to our residents is pretty huge.
It is.
I mean, the kinds of, the kinds of resources that are brought to bear on the level of crime activity is big. And the crime is big.
And also through, and you're right, 100% correct. Also, through this, we have partnerships with the task force right now with Homeland Security, with the DEA, with FBI, with, that are involved in this task force. Homeland Security is very involved to the point that we have access to a helicopter anytime we want it. In fact, the helicopter that we have was stationed in Colorado. And because of the amount of activity going on in Utah County and the amount of arrests and narcotics, all, all types of drugs taken off the streets, Homeland Security has reassigned that helicopter to Utah County. So, it is here now because our workload has earned it. That's bad to say. I mean, it's here, but they're working hard.
Okay.
Is, is there a budget that the major task force has, like for the whole county?
Yes.
Do we know what, do we know what it is?
Don't know, off the top of my head.
Do we have any idea what our, so we don't have any financial contribution we make? We just get to draw from the resources if we participate?
No, we do have a financial contribution.
Do you know what that costs?
It's based per capita off of our citizens. We sit right now at, it's right around 11,000 and something dollars. We typically, it's a wash for us because as our, our detective that's assigned works overtime, we, we put in for reimbursement of that overtime. And throughout the year, we'll, we usually pretty much get it all back in reimbursement for his overtime.
Thanks.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt resolution 2016-041, authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal cooperative agreement with Utah, as the cities mentioned by the mayor. How's that? So, I have to read them all. Regarding the Utah County Major Crimes Task Force and providing for an effective date.
Okay, we have a motion by Eric and a second by Lynn by voice. Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, item ten C is continued and item ten D is to continue. Uh, sorry, I should have read into the microphone. Ten C and ten D are continued. We're on item ten E to consider for approval, a final plat called All Red Acres Plat C, including a vacation of lots one to three of All Red Acres Plat A located at approximately thirteen ninety-three north, five hundred east in the R one twenty zone.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so, um.
Miss Daniels, first time?
With the city council?
Uh-huh.
Here, yes.
Woo, welcome!
Thank you. All right, so, so this, this item, it's a, it's, it's an application for a final subdivision plat. Okay, so the subdivision is called All Red Acres Plat C. So, um, our applicant, um, it's Alfred Mickelson. Pretty much what we're doing is we're vacating lots one to three of All Red Acres Plat B, which is the existing. And the location is in thirteen ninety-three north, five hundred east.
Al's here tonight, right?
Yes, sir. Um, it's in the, uh, low-density residential, the South General Plan recognizes this area in the R one twenty zone. Okay, so here's an aerial view of what it looks right now, what's proposed. Um, lot one is this right here, and then you have another lot and the third one, which is a smaller lot right there. Okay, so that's what is proposed. That's the zone, that's the whole subdivision area. All right, so, um, this, uh, this subdivision plat includes, uh, three lots that already existed. Again, uh, one, two, three, I count them in English and Spanish just to make sure I count them right. So there's three out of them. Um, so what happens is that, there, there used to be three lots by, by land acquisitions. So one of the, uh, owners of these lots bought more land. So there, uh, there was some rearrangements of the property lines. So because of that, a new subdivision plat was required. Land use, um, the city planner, me, uh, did, uh, complete my review of this and I, um, saw that it met all the requirements, including the ones for, uh, square footage. So the smallest lot that we have, which is this tiny one right here, is still twenty-one thousand square feet. So I'll make sure that I was correctly. Engineering did its, uh, review as well and they found everything correct with the exception of one thing right there, which is the continuation of this, uh, twenty feet easement along the west, um, property, um, boundary. So right now, it's only says twenty right here and then it goes to ten, so that's something that is gonna have to be fixed before the recordation of the plat. Okay, so the.
It's not fixed here, but it needs to.
Correct. It needs to, it's not fixed here. I fix it, I put this red line, that's what it should be. The applicant is already aware of this, engineering department is all aware of this, and we're working toward that goal. So it has to be fixed before the recordation of the plat. Okay, so because of the proposed plat currently meets all the requirements for the R one twenty zone, planning staff recommends approval of the final plat with the following conditions. The all final planning, engineering, and fire department requirements are met, including the continuation of a twenty-foot easement along the western property line. That's it. You guys have any questions regarding this subdivision?
So just for my benefit, Daniel.
Yes, sir.
Are we saying that the reds, the, the original, sorry, the original red box, if you could back up to that one?
Back to, let's see. What did I do now?
The other back.
The other back, okay.
One more. That one.
Okay.
This is, that's as it exists today.
No. No, no, that's the whole area of the subdivision.
Okay.
Um, I didn't put one as it exists today, but let's see, let's go back to the other back, right there. Maybe that's a, uh.
So on this.
That one's clear. So sorry I interrupted, Mayor, didn't mean to do that.
No problem.
So these, as you can see, this one extends all the way to, it runs from west to, west, east to west. So this one, it was the same, uh, the three of them.
Okay, so that was the question. The question is, as it exists today, this is one.
Correct.
This is two, and this is three.
Correct.
And now we're looking at making this and this.
Right.
And then this is gonna continue?
Correct.
This will become the, the larger remaining lot.
Correct.
Okay.
There's, there's a little, what happened is that this, uh, uh, well, Ken told me not to tell you a lot of, uh, the background, but it looks like you need some background.
I don't see him here, so I think you're fine.
But he, when he was preparing, he told me skip the background, go straight to the analysis.
Okay, he's not here.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So this used to be one lot and as it exists today, this is one lot. And this right here is a piece that it was, uh, I don't, illegally subdivided. So I'm pretty sure what happens is that the, uh, the owner of this lot bought this piece from this guy and it only went straight to recordation without going through a subdivision process. So right now, we're cleaning up the process, making everything legal, just making the plat and, and, and making a cleaner and good approach. So, again, it was one lot right here and this one used to belong to this, but it was already separated. If you go to the county records, it looks like it was a separate lot, but it was illegally subdivided. Okay.
Al, did you have anything you wanted to address the council with?
Not really, but I want to just clarify.
Okay.
When we purchased the property about thirty years ago, do you have a pointer?
Here.
This one?
Yes.
When we bought it, bought the property, it includes this and this property. Okay, so whatever subdivision that occurred, it was before my time.
Okay.
And, uh, we have, uh, operated our little farm, this property, and we use our neighbor's property here. And also, we're purchasing, uh, this back portion of the property so that we can continue to operate our, our, our farm, which is horses, a big pig.
Right.
Kevin Bacon, if you haven't heard. And, uh, so, so we just wanna continue what we have been doing for, for a long time. So, and, uh, in talking with planning and engineering, they're very cooperative and we appreciate their, their help. So.
So does this clear it up for you, Al?
This would clear it up. And, uh, we agreed to go ahead and extend the easement to this part of, uh, of the existing property. When they developed this property, just for your information, uh, there are a row of trees right behind, uh, here by the canal, which is, at the time was open. And, uh, and I, and they were gonna go out there and start cutting these pine trees. And I thought, you know, what a shame to, to have some nice trees and you're out there just to chop it down, just to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, cover the, the ditch right here. So I talked to the property owners and the developer and I say, hey, why don't you just move the pipe back over here on my property and, and let's go ahead and preserve those trees. So, uh, I think the property owners in that subdivision are grateful that at least I took that stance. So.
Right.
So, so we have no intention of developing this area, uh, but we wanna continue to enjoy our lifestyle.
Right. Uh, any questions for Al?
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Any questions for Daniel?
Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, council, I'll make the motion that we approve a final plat called All Red Acres Plat C, including a vacation of lots one through three of All Red Acres Plat A located approximately thirteen ninety-three north, five hundred east in the R one twenty zone, subject to all the engineering and final planning and fire department requirements and subject to the easement correction on the west side of the property.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben, a second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Al, you're good to go. Okay. And you can stay if you want, but you know better, right?
As he runs.
Been here before. Okay, um, we're now moving on to section eleven. Um, this is our discussion on our relationship with Strawberry Days Association. And then also in eleven B, it's gonna be a financial report to the city council from Jason Hunter, who is this, the financial director for the, where are you, Jason? You do the finances for the Strawberry Days Association. Okay, and I wanna recognize our current chair, uh, for Strawberry Days is here. Lisa, uh, right here in the front. And then, did you bring this gentleman in with you? Are you part of the Strawberry Days also?
I am.
Hey.
Oh, my goodness, he's the great of it.
Tell me your name. You're Denny. Okay, thanks, Denny. Denny, I've heard your, your name so many times, but you are like totally invisible. So, thank you. I'm sure you're not visible when you're out there working, but we, um, before we get started, I just wanna express on behalf of the city, thank you for, um, consenting to come tonight and, uh, help us understand where, uh, we are with the finances of the city. I'm gonna turn it over to, is it Tina that's gonna present or Scott? Are you gonna start?
I'm gonna start.
Okay. I've asked staff to take a minute and kind of clear up some misunderstandings about what the relationship legally, the relationship is between the city of Pleasant Grove and the Strawberry Days Association.
Uh, so some of this is gonna be clear, some probably still a little muddy when it's all said and done, but I think we're gonna.
Then Tina will play cleanup.
Yes. In fact, I'm gonna have Tina start and she's gonna talk about the legal entities and what they represent, 'cause I, this is kind of a key point to the whole discussion.
And it is germane. Tina has met with me and kinda briefed me on this and it was very enlightening.
Okay, so in my research through, uh, many old, old books of minutes that are very heavy and very large, and then the, uh, file that the city recorder maintains on the Strawberry Days Committee, um, what was clear to me after I went through and researched is, is that there's actually three entities involved when you needed, when you're talking about the Strawberry Days celebration. The first entity is the Strawberry Days Association itself. And the Strawberry Days Association was incorporated in nineteen sixty-two as a Utah corporation. That designation, uh, creates a separate entity. It's a completely separate entity from Pleasant Grove City, which we are a municipal corporation. There's nothing in the files indicating that the Strawberry Days Association was ever dissolved and the incorporation documents state that, that, that that entity is to exist for ninety-nine years.
And when we say incorporation, are we talking about incorporated?
Yes.
Like a business entity would in the, in the state of Utah?
Yes. In fact, there's attached to, um, the document that, the incorporation documents, there's a certification from the Utah State Division of Corporations accepting their.
So this is a legal entity?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, interestingly enough, it may not have anything to do with the discussion tonight, but it was interesting to me. The association was originally formed not just to handle strawberry, the Strawberry Days celebration, but also to do other civic service. And throughout the file, there are a number of things that they have, um, contributed money towards or, or work towards in the city over the years. They restored the G. They fixed the time and temperature sign that used to be down on, um, center and State Street. They renovated one of the log cabins. They helped with fire and ambulance equipment. They provided playground equipment. They did some restoration of the rodeo grounds way back when. And it appears from the documents in the file that the Chamber of Commerce and the local stakes of, stakes of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints were the main contributors of officers' time and volunteer labor to make the celebration a success. Their incorporation documents also indicate how officers in the association will be chosen and the committee members are also outlined. The other indication to me as an attorney that they have been a separate entity and continue to be a separate entity was that their fiscal year is the calendar year, which is different than the city's. Our, our fiscal year is from June thirtieth to July first each year and they operate on a totally different fiscal calendar. Um, over the years, the city has not been involved in managing the association, nor has the city ever received any direct information or control over the association's bylaws or their financial information. Uh, for some reason or other, nineteen eighty-eight was a key year for keeping records and our city file actually contains, um, a report similar to what Jason, I assume, is gonna give us tonight on the, um, Strawberry Days finances at the end of the celebration. And that is the only document that I could find in the file where those finances were shared with the city. Um, the second entity that we need to be aware of is the Strawberry Days Association Rodeo, or the Strawberry Days Rodeo Association Incorporated. And they are also a separate corporate entity incorporated under the state of Utah, uh, laws. Um, they even more so than the Strawberry Days Association have been separate and apart from any city finances or control. They've always had their own, uh, elections of, uh, committee members and have always handled their own money, um, separate and apart from the city.
What was the date on that one? I'm sorry.
Um, you know, I, I left that out of my notes. I wanna say it was nineteen forty-seven. It was, it was a long time ago. I remember it was pretty old.
Okay.
Um, and then there's the city, of course, as a separate entity who hosts the celebration. And then the Strawberry Days Committee is the entity that different, these different separate groups have appointed to manage and organize and coordinate the actual celebration. Um, does that, is there anything else you'd like to know?
That covers what I.
Okay.
Was expecting.
Okay.
So the reason I asked for this is I think that legal backdrop, um, demonstrates three distinct legal entities that work together but are completely separate in their jurisdiction and in their financial responsibilities. So to the degree that we commingle activities and volunteer and help one another, we need to keep in mind that those that are participating, not from the city, but from the two other associations are volunteers. And so when we ask them to help us with understanding finances or, or step up and, and take on a responsibility, they're doing this as volunteers. And we need to be respectful of the fact that they are volunteers. And we do not exercise dominion, control, or any kind of legal, um, whatever over this, over these entities. We're doing this by cooperation. So we've invited them as a city council to come tonight and help us understand from their perspective, where are the books at right now financially? And then also, we wanna understand what the city has contributed and how we, how we can set a framework for going forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Just if I can add, uh, the city, the city I was in before I came to Pleasant Grove, we had a full-time person that oversaw our Founder's Day celebration. And, uh, that person spent a lot of time, um, getting sponsors and, and doing a lot of things to put on a pretty big production. Well, I get here to Pleasant Grove, Strawberry Days is probably two times the size of what we were doing in South Ogden. And when I saw that it was all volunteers that was doing this, kinda just really blew me away that, uh, there's people willing to do that and that they could pull it off. And it's, 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 uh, pretty amazing. Uh, what I wanna, uh, discuss is, uh, some of the, the things that we have talked, when I say we, um, just recently Diana and I and Lisa and Denny and Jason sat down and said, you know, we've been operating, um, for quite a while where, uh, the city's been doing whatever part that we've had and then the committee, the association, both associations with the rodeo have been doing what they, that they've been doing. And we all felt it would be nice to, um, solidify this a little better so that the, the lines were a little bit more clear as to what the responsibilities are. Uh, in the past, um, there've just, there's been times the city has stepped in and done things for Strawberry Days Committee and vice versa. So there's been a little bit of give and take, but it's, some of the roles never got, um, fully defined. Um, we do know that on the basis of what Tina's talked about, uh, the financials have always been a separate thing. The, the city has never told Strawberry Days Committee, this is how you have to spend the revenue that you generate, um, as a committee. Um, but, uh, the city has participated in, in different ways. So one of the ways that we participate is by providing some staff. So, one of the ways that we participate is by providing some staff to help with the celebration. And some of these staff members are actually on the Strawberry Days Committee when it comes to the planning of the event. So we provide police, fire, some of our parks people, and some of our rec people are probably the main bulk of the time that is spent to help with this celebration. In order for this to go off and for the city to do that, we, when we added up the man-hours and put a cost to it, it was roughly $52,000, in essence, that the city spends, particular to the people that help make sure that Strawberry Days can be, can happen. Without the, the police overtime and the fire overtime, and really the parks, the parks do a ton, this celebration would, wouldn't be the quality that it is. It'd probably still figure a way to pull it off, but it just, our, our people, our staff, the Pleasant Grove City staff, do a lot that week, but also in some of the weeks leading up to that. And that was one of the questions that was asked is, well, what's the city's financial burden in regards to that? Well, that's, that's our personnel cost. Now, we also participate in the Miss Pleasant Grove Pageant, which is actually separate from Strawberry Days. Terry Marchbanks is the one who runs the pageant, and the city has funded the pageant, the scholarships, and the things that go along with that. We also fund the float that is used for the different celebrations around Utah County that our, the Pleasant Grove royalty will attend. That cost is, there's, that's a cash cost to us of about $22,000. In the last, I think Denise went back three years, and it was in that neighborhood, about $22,000 that the city spends specific to the pageant. So, our, our relationship with the pageant is the city and the pageant. It's not necessarily really anything to do with Strawberry Days. Terry Marchbanks is on the committee, and she participates in the Strawberry Days and what's going on. But it is really separate as far as that's concerned. So that's our financial. Now, we, there are a couple little things. We, I think one year, we were trying to figure out who was going to pay for porta potties, and I think we paid for the fish at Huck Finn Days, if I remember that right. So there are some other things where the city has a little bit of a financial stake, but I think that's rolled into the $22,000, if I'm correct. So, when we sat down about a month ago and started talking about defining the relationship, these were the issues that we wanted to make sure we, we have figured out. The Strawberry Days Association, in years past, from time to time, has used the... Jason, you correct me if I get this a little bit wrong. Our sales tax exemption number. Now, we have a tax ID number, and I'm on record as saying that the, the committee uses our tax ID number, but the tax, well, I've been now educated, the tax ID number and the sales tax number are two separate numbers. Is that correct? And the committee has not used, or the association has not used, the tax ID number.
We, I'll talk about this more, but the, the only time that I have given the city's tax ID number out is when a contract with the city, like the boutique, requests a W-9.
Okay. Thank you. So, these are some of the situations where some of these, over time, the city and the committee and the association have really kind of intermingled on how we operate. And really, a lot of what we do is we're, we're just trying to get the event to happen and to get it done, hopefully, in a, in a good manner. But because of that, and because of the question and saying, okay, let's define this, I think it would be important for the association to establish their own tax ID number, their own sales tax exemption number, and to... I don't know if they're already officially a 501(c)(3), but whatever they need to do in order to make sure that all that stuff is quite clear. So the association's already been established, and what exactly that means and how that is a relationship to Pleasant Grove City, we just need to make sure that that's defined all the way. So that's one thing that's on our list. We want to make sure that Strawberry Days has their own bylaws, which they do. In 2013, we had discussions. The committee asked the city for some help on some of these things. Part of it was updating the bylaws. Mayor Call had a draft copy of some updated bylaws that I don't think were ever adopted. And when I looked through them the other day, if they were adopted, they're not being followed very well. So, I, I think it's one of those things where there was the city trying to, to help out in whatever manner we could, but it's, I think it's important for the association to make sure they have their own bylaws. They're the ones that are approving their bylaws, and the city doesn't really have anything to do with that. At that same time in 2013, the city created a, in essence, a formal city committee called the Strawberry Days Committee, under which the city appointed the Chair and the Vice-Chair at the time. And part of that was to set up a little bit of a rotation so that we had different leadership that would kind of go in and out of the committee with people learning what it meant to be Vice-Chair before they became Chair, and they would have an understanding how to run the, the event. I think at this point, if, if we're going to make this true separation of everything, that we would probably want to eliminate the Strawberry Days Committee as a city committee and have them appoint their own Chair and Vice-Chair, and have them proceed in that manner at that point, and the, the city is not involved with that. And that's how they did it up till 2013. There was, and I can't remember what it was, there was something that prompted, you know, changing that in 2013, and that change was made. But again, if that's continuing to make things a little murky, then let's take a step back. I mean, at least that's my recommendation as the city administrator, and, and let them take care of that. And then, once we get everything defined, I think it would be good that we enter into an agreement between Pleasant Grove City and the Strawberry, Strawberry Days Association that is very specific as to what the relationship is. And we, as a city, will contractually obligate ourselves to provide certain personnel at certain levels in order for the event to take place. We can also further define anything else that the committee might need from the city, or vice versa, if there's things that the city needs from the committee. And then we just outline it in the agreement so that it's quite clear. This is the association, this is the city, and we don't, like we do sometimes, kind of turn around, look at each other, say, okay, who's going to take care of that? With the Rodeo Association, our relationship as a city is that we do own the rodeo grounds. The, we don't charge the association to use the rodeo grounds. And the association in the past, on revenues that they have generated from the rodeo, have turned around and reinvested in capital improvements on the rodeo grounds. I know there's been lights and bleachers and things like that over the last few years that have been updated and put in. And generally speaking, to my knowledge, that's how some of the money from the rodeo that has been generated has been, in essence, put back into the city's infrastructure, because we own the rodeo grounds. I think it'd be good to, again, contractually between Pleasant Grove City and the, and the Rodeo Association to define that. I think it'd be beneficial for us to create a capital plan, maybe a five-year capital plan between us and the Rodeo Association, so that we're all on the same page on, on future improvements. And, and talking with the committee, they would probably appreciate a little bit of city participation as far as some of the improvements that have gone out there. Last year, we helped pay for a building out there as a city that we put money towards. And so, we, we've been a little spotty on that as a city. Really, the Rodeo Association has done mostly improvements out there. We improved some of the parking lot and things like that as part of the, the ballfields out there. So there has been some things that have been done that have been beneficial to both sides. But I think it'd be important that we enter into that agreement and define that between us and the association. So, you know, just a couple other things. In the past, there's been contracts, the carnival, the boutique. Some of the city has signed, and some that the, the Strawberry Days Association has signed. And so that's something that was a little murky that I think we need to clear up is, who's going to sign the contracts and who's going to own the contract, as far as that's concerned? I think that's it that I have on my notes. So, just to kind of encapsulate that, Jason's going to talk about the financial part of it. I'm probably talking more the broader spectrum of further defining, and I think that's still work that we continue, you know, the five of us that met a month ago, for us as, as that committee to continue to define, okay, this is ours, this is yours, and get that into a format that the city, the Pleasant Grove City Council can take a look at and say, we're comfortable participating at Strawberry Days on this level, and then we can enter into the contract. If there's some things in there that the council does not want to do, or feels like we should do more, then we can talk about all that and, and figure out. This was just my list that I created as I was trying to think through the process and trying to figure out, here's what we need to do. Any questions?
Questions for Scott?
I've got a bunch, but I'll save them to the very end, if that's okay.
For Scott or for the...
I've got some for Scott, some for Jason, probably some that only Tina can answer. I've got several.
Great. Thanks, Scott. Jason, it looked like you've fully developed your beard at this point. And you're headed out of town today?
No. A week and a half.
Okay.
It's still taxis in there. Yes, I have a presentation.
Who's got the...
Bring it up here, we can get it working.
Oh, you'll probably have to type it in there.
Yeah.
Dear Hunter 04...
Elk Hunter.
Be watching my daughters.
Remember, we, we were judges last time.
Must've did a really bad job.
They didn't even do the same event.
Yeah.
Foster?
The, the rep... The what? Oh, that's right. I did not. Is it inside? Is it in, on...
Hang on a minute, this is from Miss Pleasant Grove, Allison Lawrence. While we're... Wait, I'm just going to pass this. It's pumpkin.
I'll take section seven, yeah.
Okay. It's pumpkin chocolate chip waffle cookie.
That sounds good.
I voted for her, too.
Yeah, we did.
So I'm sad I missed her.
Oh, Miss America, Sunday, 7:00 PM. Miss PG?
Mm-hmm.
For water, Scott?
Oh, I took one. This is my second.
No, I'm okay. I think I'll be okay. Well, half my presentation was just given by Scott, so, and Tina. Okay, so, I threw this together because we were originally scheduled to present in October. So it was a very short notice. This is my busy time of year, so you'll forgive, have to forgive me for mistakes and for reading part of my presentation. Normally, I'd be better prepared than this.
But again, you're volunteering, right? This is just volunteer beside your full-time job? That's clarified.
So, Mayor and Council, citizens and staff, I'm Jason Hunter, 680 East, 300 North, Pleasant Grove. I'm the Treasurer of Strawberry Days Association, Inc., that we learned about. I'm the Financial Chair of Strawberry Days Committee, and I'm the Acting Treasury, Treasurer for the Strawberry Days Rodeo, Inc., which herein we'll refer to as the Rodeo Committee. So, as Tina mentioned, Strawberry Days Association is a nonprofit association established in June of 1962 with a five-fold purpose. Those five purposes, which we still focus on today, are: Working as a unit towards better civic and recreational development; To build the general area of Pleasant Grove and Linden as the outstanding residential area upon the Wasatch Front; To build closer relationships between all religious and civic clubs and organizations in the general area; To publicize and promote our celebration as a major event in the state of Utah; And to develop and expand existing recreational facilities in this area. Strawberry Days Association has a long history of helping to put on the city's celebration, known as Strawberry Days. While many other cities have to expend many dollars directly to put on their celebration, Pleasant Grove helps to fray these costs to the taxpayers by utilizing the association. And there's quite a few association members in the, former presidents in the room, so thank you for showing up. The Strawberry Days Rodeo was formed back in the 1940s. At one point, it did own the property where the rodeo grounds are now. It was sold back to the city in the 1950s. At this point, I, as part of the association, as the association treasurer and acting treasurer for the rodeo, have tracked the incomes and expenses that the rodeo committee produces separately from that of the rest of the association. So, as we go through this presentation, you'll see that there are numbers for both the association and the rodeo committee. We're... As a separate legal entity, as Tina mentioned, Strawberry Days Association doesn't have the legal requirement that the City of Pleasant Grove has to answer grammar requests or to disclose financial information to the city councils or the citizens, citizens of the city. However, as a member of the Strawberry Days Association and the rodeo, we recognize that the city and citizens of Pleasant Grove are our primary stakeholders. In an effort of transparency and openness to our stakeholders, I have prepared a summary of both Strawberry Days Association and the rodeo committee's operations over the past three years since I have become treasurer. Due to the sensitive, sensitive nature of vendor contracts and sponsorship agreements, I will not be sharing line-item details. However, I invite any city council person, city council member, to make an appointment with me to review the books so that we can collectively advocate the great festival, city festival that is Strawberry Days, and the benefit that the association and rodeo provide to the community. Strawberry Days Association is not my full-time job. I spend over 100 hours a year volunteering for this organization that benefits the city, and many of our primary committee members do the same or significantly more. Due to the demands and time required of our volunteers to run the events, some of the administrative workings of the committee are completed in the months following the actual events. As I mentioned earlier when Scott was talking, the question has been raised if Strawberry Days Association is operating under the city's tax ID number. Strawberry Days Association does have its own tax ID number. There have been times, as I mentioned, when bills, such as the porta potties and dumpsters, are sent to the city, and Strawberry Days Association has paid for these invoices directly so that taxpayers don't have to cover these costs. On these few occasions, Strawberry Days Association has used the city's sales tax exemption certificate. Other invoices that are sent directly to Strawberry Days, we pay sales tax on. As I mentioned earlier, there have also been times when a W-9 is requested from a customer. On those contracts, where the contract was also signed by the city manager, as I mentioned, the contract with the boutique, I have provided the city's tax ID number on a W-9 that I received... Um, Strawberry Days and the rodeo committee taking, take pride in helping our community more than just running Strawberry Days. Over the past three years, well over a hundred thousand, or 10,000 volunteer hours a year have been spent on improvements to the city and supporting the various Strawberry Days events. A hundred and ninety-two thousand has been spent on improving the rodeo grounds, specifically improving the stadium floor, uh, improved dirt, which is a funny thing, most people wouldn't concern that, but you can ask Denny and the rodeo committee how they feel about dirt. Um, it's very important for a barrel racer. Uh, the new building, uh, we, we built the new building, including restrooms on the northwest corner of the grounds. We improved the patron entrance, we cut down dead trees, and we've improved seating. We spent $60,000, uh, on fund rate, on funding citizens' activities, including Huck Finn Days, other than the fish that Scott mentioned, that's paid for by the city, the art contests, the baby contests, Little Miss Strawberry Days, the Guns and Hoses Run, and the parade. Um, thirteen thousand five hundred has been given scholarships to worthy students involved in volunteer activities. That was a scholarship that, um, Scott Fugel helped set up, uh, three years ago. We, we started, um, giving, um, three scholarships to eligible, uh, high school seniors that qualify, and they're not an academic scholarship, and it's a blind process on how that's done, but it's, it's based off of volunteer, uh, hours and what they do in their, in their volunteer activities. We've also, um, given over thirteen thousand, uh, to Tough Enough to Wear Pink, which is a cancer-fighting organization. Our primary funding sources include rodeo tickets and concession sales, city of fun carnivals, and many private sponsors. Strawberry Days Association does not receive any direct taxpayer funds, though there are some items that are collected through the city and dis, distributed to the association and vice versa. Uh, as Scott mentioned, there are the non-cash items that the city pays for, and the fish, there's a few other things.
And there's also some events, Jason, is this right? Like the pageant, you have to pay to get in for a ticket?
We, we don't deal with the pageant at all.
Oh, that, okay.
That's a separate city.
But even though it's separate, they still have that revenue stream coming in through ticket sales?
I can't speak to that.
All right, that's okay.
Um, there are, uh, we do not deal with, um, any of the recreation programs that go on during Strawberry Days. Um, sorry, we don't collect revenues or expend expenses related to the majority of those. We do spend some expenses, which, uh, for advertising and, um, other things. We have tried, I've worked with the city, uh, accounting team over the past three years to try and actually make sure we're match, matching revenue with expenses. If, uh, if one organization has the revenue, that organization also collects, pays the expenses for that, and vice versa. Um, the financials that we'll look at are primarily cash transactions. Most non-cash items of income or expense are not recorded on the association or rodeo committee's books. There are a few exceptions. Um, for example, in 2014, when we, we did record the portion of the new restroom building that the city paid directly to the contractor as an income item on the association's books, so that we could record the full cost of the building for future reference. Uh, my goal has, since I have become treasurer, was to get all the cash and non-cash items recorded so that we could have a true accounting of the benefits and costs of the association. Uh, many of these non-cash items are hard to determine a correct fair market value. Uh, we are getting better at that, um, asking our vendors, um, to provide us with that so we can track what they've given us. Uh, that would, an example would be, um, a vendor that gives, um, coupons for, uh, an event, discounted coupons, like Taco Omega. Uh, yes. Um, so these, these financials that we'll see, as I said, are primarily cash. Um, so Strawberry Days Association, it's our statement of activities, um, and you traditionally don't have a full year of accounting and then only nine months, but, uh, or eight months, but we are such a singular event for the majority of our revenue and expenses that this is pretty much the year-end financials for 2016. Uh, you can see that the Strawberry Days Association, we have revenues, gains, and other support. Um, these come from contracts with, uh, the boutique, the carnival, and sponsorships. Um, we have the direct event expenses, those would be expenses related specifically to the events of Huck Finn Days, the baby contest, um, the art contests, Guns and Hoses Race, et cetera. Uh, operations expenses, primarily the printing of the booklet that goes out, as well as other advertising and, um, printing costs. Signages, yes. Um, there has been no charge for professional fees in that, meaning I don't actually make any money off of this. Um, and neither do any of the other committee members. Um, so you can see that, over the last three years, Strawberry Days Association has increased the, the net fund balance by $5,511. Um, that, uh, could be used up quickly, and, as you know, that's not a lot of money. Um, as we look at the rodeo committee's statement of activities, um, the primary funding for here is, um, ticket sales, tickets, ticket revenue, uh, concession revenue, and sponsorship revenue. Um, you can see that, that takes quite a lot to, to run a rodeo, the event expense. And one thing that's unique with the rodeo is that the rodeo has to go on in any weather. Um, as such, um, the association keeps a minimum cash on hand of one-year expenses. It's literally a rainy day fund. Um, with the exception of 2014, when the city paid for a portion of the restroom building, all of the major improvements on the rodeo grounds since the rodeo committee held it, as far as we can tell, have been paid for and provided by, um, rodeo committee members. Uh, from welding the original bleachers together, uh, to paying for the majority of this recent building, and putting in a lot of the labor themselves. Um, so the association builds up its fund balance so that it can pay for improvements as it goes, avoiding any debt. Um, the association, as you can see, uh, tries to do a project every two years or so, uh, two to three years, depending on what that fund looks like and what improvements need to happen. There's been new lights, there's been, uh, partial bleacher replacement, there's been new restrooms, uh, there's been rodeo, the rodeo committee building, or the majority of those, um, improvements, as I said, have been, been done for by the rodeo committee. Um, the rodeo committee currently has plans to replace the failing north stands in the nor, in the next year or two, and they're currently evaluating the cost to do so. Um, as Scott mentioned, we are looking to the city and this council to remember the rodeo grounds and their capital improvements and recreation budget, so we can continue to provide the best events in the state, and so that the rodeo grounds can, um, eventually be used for more things besides, uh, like this recent Enduro event that just took place. We've got a great, um, we've got a great facility, but it could be so much better if this council and, uh, could remember the rodeo as we plan for improvements. Um, so here are some, a list of some of the capital improvements projects that we would like to do over the next while. Uh, the north concession stands, the public entrance area, and these are not listed in any order of priority, they're just things that need to happen. Uh, improved and expanded seating, uh, that's ADA accessible and viewable. Um, right now, that, it's a major problem that those stands have is the, uh, those that are wheelchair-bound, uh, cannot see the events because of, uh, people that...
Ground floor.
Ground floor. They're on the ground floor, and they can't see. Uh, we also need safer seating. We've had, uh, old wooden bleachers break and various other things that, uh, we would ask the council to seriously consider, uh, the public safety. Um, we've got parking improvements, the city has done some of those with the most recent, um, improvements to the, the ball fields. Uh, we also have an announcer stand that needs improving, uh, contestant area improvements, and then, uh, another safety issue is, is some stock area improvements where, uh, those big bulls can't be accessed by little children. Uh, that's a major concern that, that we have as a, as a rodeo committee. Um, and, uh, so that, that's all I have prepared. Uh, I am open for questions, and, and Denny and Lisa are here as well, uh, as, so if you have any questions for me at this time, or I can sit down.
Counsel?
I've got a few. Let me preface my questions with the comment and reflect, echo the sentiment of the mayor. I think it's great, it's tremendous, the service that's been provided. I think, uh, it's worth, it bears repeating, what a wonderful, generous service it is to be involved as volunteers in a program like this, and the things that the public have, and participants, members of our, of our residents of our city have done, to serve in this capacity. It's awesome, and I'm grateful that the members of the public, by and large, and the vast majority, have expressed that same sentiment that I have as I've asked the questions, and I'm grateful that members of this committee have been so, so understanding of the fiduciary obligations I have to the public to, to ask the questions that I ask when I'm asked questions that I can't answer. So with that preface, and then another preface, I'd like to share a couple of quotes from recent, and not so recent, council meetings. Council meetings over the last five years, I think this helps provide some context and provide some context for the broader discussion that we'll have about the right way to address this question going forward. Um, and members of the public have been quick to say that this, uh, these council minutes over the last five years are testament, uh, Administrator Darrington's efforts to address this question. It's clear that this, these topics and this effort to get some transparency and accountability has gone on for a long time. This is from page seventeen of the, uh, January retreat, the budget retreat minutes. Um, page seventeen, Administrator Darrington commenting, he said that he would like to discuss Strawberry Days, their first meeting is on Monday night, and there are a few issues that need to be taken care of before that meeting. He went on to say that, for the most part, the end result of what happens is really wonderful, but the organization of the event could be better. The bylaws were written in 1957, they need to be updated, people aren't really clear what their roles are, there is no budget for Strawberry Days, they have money, but they don't have a set budget, but, that they work through. Some of the things are very basic organizational skills, the committee should know how to work through them. We do have city people on the committees that are helping out, but we don't dictate what the committee is going to do, but when things go wrong, they come to the city and they want our help to fix it. For years, it has been the understanding that city and Strawberry Days are intermingled. For instance, they use our tax identification number, and they should follow the same rules as the city for bidding out their services when it comes to an audit, if something doesn't go... This sentence is grammatically incorrect, but it says, "If something does down our tax ID number, it's linked to the Strawberry Days Committee, and that wouldn't be a good thing." Administrator Darrington went on to say that he would like to do the, is, as a city, insert ourselves and help create the organization, update the bylaws and budget, and he is willing to take the task on. He said that there is a concern with doing this, though, because of the perception of the city taking over and stepping on toes, and he wants feedback from the council to see if you are okay with him proceeding with this. Council member Lamone asked if it could happen right away. Administrator Darrington replied that it will take some time, but hopefully by 2013, they will be up and running as their own entity.
I think, I think we just cleared most of those issues up, right?
Here's the council meeting notes from November 27th of 2012. It says, on page ten of those minutes, Administrator Darrington distributed a handout on Strawberry Days. I'd love to see that handout, if it's possible, to find one, associated with November 27th of 2012. Again, this was before my time on the council. Mayor Call recognized Brian Green, the city's representative elected for the district. Administrator Darrington stated that his staff needed a further direction to proceed with Strawberry Days. Administrator Darrington said that he did his best to define what he feels is the relationship as of today, how things flow, how they operate. The history of Strawberry Days, for a long time, was that Frank Mills was the city administrator and the chairman of Strawberry Days. In some ways, this was all married together. They found out that there were a few gaps, but because those roles were combined for such a long time, they got separate, people started asking whose role was what. The questions are still being asked three years later. I would add that the questions are still being asked four years later. Administrator Darrington said that it is the current bylaws that govern Strawberry Days are the same ones from 1952 or 53. At that time, it was all separated out by the wards that were in the area, each being in charge of a certain function. There were some reporting mechanisms, and whatever Strawberry Days did, budget-wise, would be reported back to the city council. The city council always had their thumb on what was happening with Strawberry Days. Obviously, those bylaws are quite outdated, and he has written new bylaws for Strawberry Days Committee to try to bring a little more structure and define the roles a bit more. So I would love to see those bylaws that were written in 2012. Currently, Strawberry Days is overseen by a chairman, within the bylaws, doesn't really talk about who appoints the chairman or the term of the chairman, it only says that there is one. When the chair runs into a snag, she comes to the city and asks for more money. Mayor Call said that he didn't feel like there was really any connection that should be made between the Pleasant Grove pageant and the Strawberry Days festivities, other cities that do not have a city celebration still have some kind of pageant. He thinks that there just happened to be a lump together in the minds of many and don't logically separate them, but doesn't think that there's any reason why they should be intertwined. Mayor Call stated that from a financial scholarship, sponsorship standpoint, it makes sense for the city to be a sponsor of the pageant, but not Strawberry Days. The rodeo committee is technically a part of Strawberry Days, but operates autonomously. They are participative in the Strawberry Days committees, and they control the money. Council member Boyd asked, who keeps track of the money? There's no answer in the record of the minutes. Administrator Darrington said that they have been using the city's sale tax number in the past for IRS purposes. If they become their own entity, they will need to have their own tax ID number. They are not a part of the tax audit and probably should be. There is no budget oversight by the city and should be, and all of this will need to be discussed. The insurance has fallen onto the city liability, which has been the city's contribution, but if something happens off the rodeo or on the rodeo grounds, it is the city's responsibility. I'll repeat that one sentence, I think it's pertinent. There are, if they are not a part of the tax audit and probably should be, there is no budget oversight by the city and should be, and all of this will need to be discussed. The rodeo grounds are owned by Pleasant Grove City, but most of the upgrades are funded by the rodeo committee. The city is not necessarily consulted with something that's being done there. There's a communications issue, and this is, has to be addressed. Administrator Darrington reiterated that there are times when there is some conflict. The interesting part is when there is a little conflict between rodeo committee and Strawberry Days Committee, they call him. The role in the past has been that the city has to be the final arbiter when it comes to issues, and they still look to the city for leadership, and yet that role has not been defined anywhere. The city can define that, and his preference would be to have a structure in place so everyone knows what the roles are and what the expectations are, which will eliminate some of the conflict. He would also define what the city is supposed to do when it comes to Strawberry Days. The police and parks departments are heavily involved in this event, so there's a certain amount of financial contributions the city is involved in, whether through personnel costs or cash. Most of the actual cash outlays are in the pageant, not necessarily to the committees. It does not have an actual breakdown of the cost to the city, but will continue to work on getting that as they move forward with this. The city is also part of logistical support, with trash cans needed, et cetera. They're doing a lot of work behind the scenes as well. The bylaws need to be revised, a yearly budget needs to be adopted. If they are their own entity, they will need to adopt their own budgets, roles will need to be defined, they need to get their own tax ID number, which will need to be consulted with more on the rodeo grounds and upgrades.
Okay, Ben, why don't you come up with a list of questions? And let us ask them.
We'll get to that. We're coming to the questions.
I'm not sure the point of, that's why we just had this...
This is the context for the questions. We're gonna get to the questions. The preference would be that the city help them become a separate entity, but they still need some oversight because of the general public. The event is public, is Pleasant Grove City. The preference would be that the city help them to become a separate entity, but they still... Administrator Darrington reiterated that there are times when there is some conflict. The interesting part is when there is a little conflict between rodeo committee and Strawberry Days Committee, they call him. The role in the past has been that the city has to be the final arbiter when it comes to issues, and they still look to the city for leadership, and yet that role has not been defined anywhere. The city can define that and his preference would be to have a structure in place so everyone knows what the roles are and what the expectations are, which will eliminate some of the conflict. He would also define what the city is supposed to do when it comes to Strawberry Days. The police and parks departments are heavily involved in this event, so there's a certain amount of financial contributions the city is involved in, whether through personnel costs or cash. Most of the actual cash outlays are in the pageant, not necessarily to the committees. Does not have an actual breakdown of the cost to the city, but will continue to work on getting that as they move forward with this. The city is also part of logistical support with trash cans needed, et cetera. They're doing a lot of work behind the scenes as well. The bylaws need to be revised, a yearly budget needs to be adopted. If they are their own entity, they will need to adopt their own budgets, roles will need to be defined, they need to get their own tax ID number, which will need to be consulted with more on the rodeo grounds and upgrades.
Okay Ben, why don't you come up with a list of questions and let us ask them?
We'll get to that. We're coming to the questions.
I'm not sure the point of, that's why we just-
This is the context for the questions. We're gonna get to the questions. The preference would be that the city helped them become a separate entity, but they still need some oversight because of the general public. The event is public, is Pleasant Grove City. The preference would be that the city helped them to become a separate entity, but they still need oversight because to the general public, that event is Pleasant Grove City. Administrator Darrington took all of the budget expenditures from one year given him and created a basic budget for them, as well as writing some new bylaws and presented it to them. He received various forms of feedback. That's probably a polite euphemism. So moving forward, he can possibly get to the bylaws to the council soon. The budget is self-explanatory in many ways. They do have a volunteer as a certified accountant who is running the books. Administrator Darrington is comfortable with that, but they do not have any audit procedures in place and could use some work on financial controls. He would like to see the budgets outlined, how much revenue is being sponsored, how the city is putting in, how much the city is putting in. Mostly, he's asking for some real moral support, to the point where it gets outlined that the city is comfortable with it, and it gets presented to the committees, the city will back him up whether the mayor or others are attending the meetings. So to the extent you're looking for moral support, Scott, I'm attempting to give it to you. Dion Giles, Director Giles stated that he, Administrator Darrington, has spoken of the internal issues since the time he came on board and feels that there are conflicts, but his biggest concern is that they come to him two days before the rodeo starts to get insurance for the PRCA. He does have concerns and there is no structure, no guidance for anyone. Administrator Darrington said that they have many communication issues, especially in the planning process. Mayor Call said it is wise to look at this from a liability standpoint. If something happens, the public is never going to separate Strawberry Days from the city of Pleasant Grove. If something happens, the public is never going to separate Strawberry Days from the city of Pleasant Grove. We are intertwined in a brand, so interlocked that the city does not take some proactive steps now to ensure that things are done in a proper way. Shame on us for not preparing.
Is that in the minutes or is that you're just-
This is in the minutes. I'm reading, these are verbatim quotes from the minutes of 2012. Administrator Darrington said on a part, that a part of what he has seen is that the city wants to provide some structure. If they want to operate without a structure, that's fine, but he feels that some of those people on the committees are begging for structure. There has been some level of frustration where they are trying to do whatever they are assigned to do and feel like they're hitting a brick wall because they don't know who to get answers, who to go to to get answers. If they continue to go on as before, he feels they're going to lose people as they get fed up with it and leave. Council member Boyd said that the city is not expecting anything different from them and don't expect, that they don't expect from the arts council. They all have their bylaws and go by a budget, so this shouldn't be any different, isn't any different. Council member Lamone said that the Strawberry Days being separated from rodeo will never happen. They will never be able to get enough sponsorships to go out on their own. Administrator Darrington said that he will come back on December eleventh, 2012 with information that is a little more concise. He will email the bylaws to the council as well as the budgets. He added that if the council disagrees with the structure or anything, please let him know. The entire purpose of this is to generate discussion. Once the city defines the role the city wants to take, they can talk to the committees and tie up any loose ends and see what they want to do. I like that paragraph, generate discussion, the entire purpose is to generate discussion. This is from the next retreat.
Okay, let's ask the questions, Ben. We get it. We get that you're trying to pit people against each other. Say what you have to say and ask your questions. As we are all here tonight, that's what we've been trying to do for the past few years is clear up the confusion. We don't need any more past history, it's getting beyond ridiculous, so ask your questions. Or else I'll take a vote to make it stop.
January first of fifteen, 2013. Scott Darrington attached draft bylaws, which had questions. Here are five of them.
Questions, you're not asking questions.
Should Strawberry Days be a separate entity? Do we want to have a Strawberry Days chairman appointed by the mayor and council, or are we okay with the current system? Should the city carry liability for the event? Should the city have financial oversight? Right now, they do have a setup, system set up where they should have a general understanding of the revenues they generate each year and they have a general understanding of expenditures, but not an actual budget.
Okay, I'm gonna make the motion that we ask Mr. Stanley to stop reading the minutes that could go on and on and on for the next hour. People have places they need to be who are on the committee here tonight and have requested that if we need their questions answered, they have that opportunity. I don't know how much more longer this could take. It's irrelevant what we're discussing. Ask your questions that are relevant to 2016 based on the minutes that you've gone through, and let's ask them and get to the point.
How much more do you have?
Okay, we have a motion by Sid. Do we have a second?
How much longer is it?
Probably five, one minutes of background and context before I get to some questions.
I'm going to second.
Okay, we have a motion by Sid, a second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Three in favor of asking you to stop reading minutes and get to your questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm grateful for the interest of the public in asking questions. I think they have done it in an attitude and a spirit that's appropriate for our city and a desire for transparency and openness and accountability. I'm going to just read questions that have been asked by members of the public. Hopefully Jason or Lisa or Denny or Scott or Tina can speak to some of these questions. You already spoke, Jason, a little bit about some of the scholarship money. People are comfortable with the, by and large, I would say, the public is comfortable with the scholarships that are handled through the pageant because there's transparency and it's handled through the city's finances and they can see that. But in speaking of the non-pageant scholarships, you mentioned in the last three years, there were thirteen thousand dollars worth of non-pageant scholarships.
And what's your question?
What is the total amount awarded by the city and by Strawberry Days Committee in 2014, fifteen and sixteen? Thirteen thousand five hundred, is that the total amount?
The, and, and Denny can speak to the scholarship more. That is, that scholarship is provided by the rodeo committee, and it's three, three qualified applicant, or three qualified individuals that each receive a fifteen hundred dollar scholarship, so forty-five hundred a year.
What is the scholarship?
Do you want more, Denny's got?
Oh yeah, that'd be great, Denny.
I actually started it with Scott Fugel, so, go ahead.
What is the application process?
The application process is, is we send it to two different high schools, the high schools that are right here, and then we get applications back, and then we actually have them white out so we don't know who we're, we're reading, and then me and Scott go through them. And the reason we started it was for service, and so what it is, is it's a service-oriented scholarship. It isn't a, I got my Eagle and I did this service project. It is a, these young kids that go and help out at the handicap schools and it's gotta be something that's hit out of the ballpark type. It's not just your normal LDS stuff. And, and the reason it got started was because I was sitting down there one day and I thought, you know what? All of us sit down here for all these days and nights and weeks and years and do all this work for zero. We get absolutely not one dime, but we get all the criticism, which is awesome.
Question for you, Denny.
Like city council.
Is the, is the scholarship money donated, is that raised and donated by the rodeo committee?
It is. What, now, now, let me, let me clarify how that's raised. What we do is we get X amount on seating, correct? So when we get our money at the end of the year, we actually would take that and go, okay, we're gonna give three thousand dollars back. What we did start out was three scholarships, a thousand dollars each, that came out of our funds that we had, we had acquired.
Sure.
And then, two years ago, we only had two people that, that, I, I don't know, I guess applied, so we only had two. So we ended up giving it up, one thousand five hundred for each one of those that, that year.
Thank you. Let me, let me try to clarify why I'm asking you the question. If a separate legal entity is raising funds and making a donation to a scholarship pageant, why is the city of Pleasant Grove requesting information about what they're doing with that money?
I think from the perspective of you asking me, Mayor?
Yes.
The reason I get questions from the public is because they see the intertwining that I was reading about in some of that context. There's a, there's a perception amongst much of the public that the surpluses of the rodeo days could be used to reduce or minimize the offsets and the assistance and subsidies that the city provides. For example, all the security, all of the logistics support, all of the-
Which is understandable, and, and part of that, we, I think it was five years ago that we handed Dion Giles a receipt for tickets that, what was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that went back to PG City for their workers. We were trying to break this out. This has taken, I, I don't think this council understands how long it's taken to get this organization where it's at today.
Actually, I'm sorry, Denny, don't say council, because it's the majority of us do understand.
Well, what, what I'm getting at on that, fifteen years ago, and I will not mention any names, but we ran out of toilet paper down there on Wednesday night, and I ran to a, to a city worker who, who had all the power, and I says, "I need some toilet paper in here now." We got, we got women without toilet paper, and he said, "Is it for you or is it for the rodeo committee? Cause if it's for you, I'll do it. If it's for the rodeo committee, you can stuff it."
Okay, so-
That's how far, what I'm getting at, Mayor, this has came and where we're at today. Two thousand twelve, that's passed. If we want to talk about 2016, I am all for anything we can do to make this council and the rodeo and Strawberry Days Committee a unified entity and make it better for the whole city, not just here. No offense, I have a different ulterior goal in all this. My goal, and, and on record, is money for one reason, and one reason only, and that's for more seats, cause if I get more seats, I can get more kids in those seats. We implemented the Wednesday night kids free. Now, last year, I couldn't do that, cause financially, it wasn't working out, so we went a dollar per seat. The reason being, I want more seats. If we can get our youth there, you're gonna get more youth, obviously, and their kids and, you know, down the road, years and years. I, I got people coming to this rodeo from New Zealand, Australia, everywhere, for not just the rodeo, but for the celebration. People are planning their whole summers around this. So we have tried to emulate family. You know, something was mentioned up there about LDS and, and the way this runs and everything We've had an opportunity to have Skoll come in. I've had Coors that's wanted to come in. I could get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars cash from, from Coors to help me make that a better place down there. We haven't done that. We have tried to keep the families in our community that are writing you or talking to you and, and trying to keep it a family-oriented program so that we don't have issues down there. I don't, I don't want, no offense, drunks. I don't want, you know, I don't want needles. You know, we found some syringes, you know, and we talked to the police officers about it from last year. You know, we've tried to clean up and make it better. You know, so from 2012, has it come a long ways? Absolutely. Has it come a long ways from fifteen years ago, night and day?
Thanks, Denny, and, and we do applaud and appreciate that effort to maintain a family environment.
So, Ben, in the spirit of the cooperative nature between these volunteer and separate legal entities, I think it's only fair that we show respect and a little bit of humility in the way that we ask our questions. We are asking for volunteers to participate with us in providing information. We're not in a position to command or demand anything, and, and we need to help educate our, our public that this is not an owned, these four organizations that have been mentioned are not owned nor under the auspices of the city of Pleasant Grove. It's a cooperative effort. So to the degree that you could help tone the questions to the committee with respect, I think that would be mutually received. You can, you can play a valuable intermediary role here between those that are concerned and those that are volunteering their time.
Appreciate the recommendation and the wisdom, and let me do my best, cause we do, we're grateful. There are questions about how we advertise those scholarship opportunities, how they're decided, how, who has responsibility for making those decisions.
Lisa, do you wanna go ahead and, otherwise, it won't be recorded. And again, I want to emphasize, this information, again, is coming from a private entity and it's being offered because we're asking, but it's voluntary.
Well, I'll speak as a school representative. I'll speak as a school representative right now. Ben?
Yes.
Those scholarships, those applications are brought to the school by Scott or Denny. They're taken to the counseling office where all scholarships are displayed, and then Lisa Jacobs, her name is Lisa Jacobs, in the Pleasant Grove Counseling Office, she hands those out, those scholarship applications out and advertises them online. She hands them out to kids that she thinks might be deserving of them, that they might fall under their genre of what they're applying for and elsewhere. And I know last year, Lisa told me she handed out over three hundred to our seven hundred kids or so that were looking at being seniors. So I don't know how Tim Bernogus handles it, but from a Pleasant Grove standpoint, that's what we do.
That's great, that's helpful. And then, how are they evaluated? Who's on the, on the decision-making body that, that awards them?
So I, I'd already said that, but it was me and Scott had actually, we get them and then, and then we weed them out really quick, like I told you.
Just the two of you?
Yep.
Please bring up the names. They don't have them here.
Let me ask some others that I have been asked. I appreciate again your willingness to entertain these questions. These may be ones that are maybe more directly for Jason's expertise. Let me skip some of them. Do you know who kept the books before you?
CPA by the name of Jeff Matthews.
Do you know how many years he did it?
I do not.
You mentioned that you've tried to improve controls. What are some of the controls you have?
Again, as I mentioned, there's a, we've, we, we have a cash controls, we have, we have separation of custody of checks as well as, as well as signing authority on checks. So the person that controls the checks cannot sign the checks and vice versa, as well as various other controls, both cash and non-cash controls.
How many people on the committee have signing authority and how many have payment authority?
I'm not going to answer that at this time.
Do you know?
I do.
Is there a reason why that's not something you're willing to share?
Because I don't think it's under the purview of the city council to need to know that information.
I think we need, I think we need to be reminded again, Ben, that this is a separate legal entity. They're here because they volunteered, they accepted an invitation to come. This is not a hearing. We're not here to question them in a, in a legal capacity or an authoritarian capacity. This is, they're volunteering their time and effort. This is voluntary.
Is there a reason that you would need to know that?
I think there are people in the public that would like to understand the cash controls, the number of transactions they're doing in cash.
They are welcome to go and talk to the committee themselves, which is a separate legal entity, and make that request. It's, it's really not the city's place.
And we're always looking for good volunteers.
We wouldn't go to DoTERRA and ask them for their financials. We wouldn't come to Water Gardens and ask me for my financials. We wouldn't go to the Eagles and ask them for their financials. We, we just, that's outside of our purview.
Except that each of those organizations truly is independent. That's the point of some of that context.
No, the fraternity org of Eagles comes in and volunteers, they participate. The, the test-out organization comes in and volunteers alongside of our, alongside of our parks department to plant flowers every year. The DoTERRA organization has volunteered and continues to offer their facilities and services for public events. Water Gardens donates extensively to public schools and reading programs at the library. Just because these two organizations or four organizations have evolved to the point where they provide a tremendous service and involve probably a third or more of the people in Pleasant Grove as part of the volunteer, it doesn't give the elected officials or the citizens the right to invade their privacy. That, I think we're crossing a boundary here. Now, if we want to request and they're willing to provide it, that's fine, but it, it kinda sounds like Trey Gotti on, on CNN and, or, you know, C-SPAN, which, yes, I do watch, I have to admit. But it's, there's a certain decorum that we're trying to maintain, and I think the real issue here is that the city's celebration that has been developed over the course of, what is it now? Are we at a hundred years yet?
Oh, ninety-three. Ninety-two, ninety-three.
This is, this is a pretty important event. And to the degree that we're going to pick each other apart, I think we're asking for a major collapse in the spirit of volunteerism in our city. And I think we need to be extremely cautious of that. So I would, I would ask you as a member of the council who represents the citizens to take a look at that and consider it and use wisdom here in how we approach these questions. And let's not ask the questions that are not ours to ask. They're just outside of our realm of responsibility. They're, they're not even within our purview. These are private entities. Where we interface, yeah, we can work together on those points of interface. But I, I, I think to, to cross-examine and grill down into a, into a degree of where it starts to feel adversarial, it destroys the spirit of volunteerism and that's what we're about. There's far more to lose here than there is to gain.
Appreciate the wisdom, Mayor. There's never been at any time in my service on the city council, a spirit of adversarial nature with any of my questions, but a responsibility to the public. And to that extent, I do believe that there are many scholars in our community who would disagree with the assessment and the analysis of the independence of these organizations. And I do feel like there's a responsibility to review and provide the oversight that for half a decade, our city has been clamoring for and our leaders have been requesting.
So there's a way to handle this in a legislative manner. I can call for a vote right now as to whether the majority of the council wishes to impose this level of questioning and detail and control and absorb the organizations that we're talking about. Or if they want to continue to separate that. And then if there's a legal challenge to that, the court system can handle that as to whether or not they are truly separate legal entities. But I don't think a city council meeting at the discretion of the six of us sitting here, we can't just assume that that is the case. It's not a foregone conclusion. I recognize the right of people to challenge that. This isn't the venue to make that determination.
Let me conclude then, Mayor, if I may, with the, with an expression of appreciation for the generous offer, Jason, to sit down with you and look at the books. I would like to take you up on that opportunity if it still exists. And we can let people resolve the other questions through private conversations with you.
Thank you, Ben. Yeah, Lisa, go ahead. Let me ask the council, is, are any on the council considering some kind of a legal challenge as to whether these organizations that have been documented and described by our city attorney are purview or subject to the authority of the city and the city council?
Um, can I just say one thing before I answer that?
Can I answer the question?
Yes, before I answer it. So I've been really, really quiet.
Sure.
And I, so I want to, I want to speak. I don't really care what has happened in the past. I really don't. Um, I am so darn grateful that, um, people donate hundreds of hours. This all started because Denny and I were chit-chatting about how we could fix the bleachers. That, that's how this whole thing happened. In fact, while, right out, right before that, a girl had fallen on the bleachers and the fire department fell through. Uh, fire department bandaged, bandaged her up gratefully. And, uh, you know, there's, there are a lot of people going in there and the bleachers are not, uh, they're not safe. So Denny and I were just talking about how we could make that happen. We talked about sponsorships. We talked about, um, what that looked like. And at the end of that conversation, it was very clear to me that in the past, things had been done differently. And, um, I wanted to be a part of a solution. I wanted to help bring three entities, um, together. And I really, I don't care what happened in the past. I really don't. I, I know that there are, the rodeo guys think that they're in getting screwed. The, can I say that through in the mic?
That's too late.
We'll, we'll bleep it out. Not treated fairly. You know, I just say what I think. But, but then the, um, the city, you know, I want to make sure that the city is also understanding what this same page looks like. And so I did ask some questions. Scott beautifully brought us all to, to the table at the same time, which I don't think had happened in a long time. And I think there was so much progress. And then there was this complete change in the conversation. And Ben, I talked with you about this. Because there had been so much history and so many different conversations in the past, we knew that this was, this conversation was going to take a while. And it's, it wasn't going to get answered immediately. And so I am very grateful that we're here, we're talking about it. I can't believe the work that's been done by Jason figuring all this out. Um, anyway, I am not at all in favor of having a legal discussion right now about Strawberry Days.
Thank you. Ben?
I'm not in favor of having a legal discussion about Strawberry Days at all whatsoever. I look around this room and see several of you that have been either chairs of Strawberry Days or been key, key parts of that. It's part of our city for Pete's sakes. It's what we, it's what we try to do. It's how we're identified, it and purple turtle and strawberries that are no longer grown here. No, for heaven's sakes, I'm not thinking of anything legal at all.
No.
Eric?
I'll do a quick, I don't want another video made of me online, but I'll be, uh, I'll be quick. I think this was done under the guise of transparency. I think, thank you, Denny, Lisa, everyone that's here. Thank you for your volunteerism, for the hundreds of hours that you've put into Strawberry Days. Uh, Danny, Lisa, Jason, you've always been very open and honest with me, very. Anytime I've asked a question, I don't think that's ever been a problem, especially the meetings I've sat in and I've had questions. I've always been answered very quickly and honestly, so I appreciate that. And so it, it kind of disheartens me when I see this, these types of questions being asked and going back to the past, it does you no good. And I appreciate you coming tonight and spending the time and moving forward. And this is what we need. And so, and then my answer is definitely no.
Ben?
I'm interested in getting to the truth. I think the truth has a virtue of its own. And so I would like to have my questions answered. I would like to have the public's questions that have been asked of me that I cannot answer, answered. I'm happy to do that in whatever context everyone is most comfortable with. So let's chat. Uh, if I could get you guys' contact information, if I don't already have it, I would love to have conversations with you privately and see if we can get all of the public's questions answered. That would be awesome. I echo the sentiments of everyone here. But we are incredibly grateful for what you do and we're grateful for the traditions and the cherished benefits to our community that so many love. And no one wants to see discouraged or trampled in any way. I know a thing or two about volunteer time and service, grateful for what you offer. No one that I know of has any interest in a legal challenge at this point, but I do know I, I have been inundated with questions and calls from people who still feel like they have not gotten all their questions answered.
And, and my response to you, Ben, is I, I will be happy to sit down and review financials with you.
Thanks.
Um, that would be under the, there, there, we might need to talk about some restrictions because you and I had had a talk, a conversation already. And then I get accused of cooking the books by someone else that you've had another private conversation with. So I'm very hesitant to meet with you alone, uh, not being on record um, because of how things have been twisted, not necessarily by you, but I am hesitant with that. That being said, I, I'd be happy to meet with you. Uh, in addition to that, we are a separate legal entity. And so there are a lot of questions that the public has maybe asked that they cannot and will not have answers to unless they become part of our organization. And if that means that the city council will decide that they no longer want to use the Strawberry Days Association, it's my understanding that that is what the city council has the ability to do, is to approve or deny, um, that relationship going forward. Um, but there will be many questions that do not necessarily have answers that the public will receive.
Appreciate that. My hope is to get either exact answers or an explanation that's satisfactory to the members of the public as to why they can't get answers. So hopefully we can get there in a spirit of cooperation.
I have a question, Ben. What's the end goal? You, I think, you think there's a conspiracy going on, you want the truth, we're like on trial. What is the end goal? You get the numbers and then what?
I think people in the public generally would like to just have some assurances that somebody that they would confide their concerns to has put his own eyes on the numbers and looked at the books and can confirm that there's not anything inappropriate. It's, in my view, it's a generalized desire of the public to have some financial oversight, something that was talked about four and a half, five years ago in this city, a need for financial oversight of this organization and how this is operated. I think people want that assurance.
Number one, don't say people in public because we're talking probably about six people in your group. We're not talking about the majority of people in Pleasant Grove.
Going to cut this conversation off because it's not germane to the purview of what we're trying to achieve. Back to the subject matter at hand. Thank you for coming tonight and sharing what you have. Uh, I think I speak for the majority of the, the council. What we'd like to try to do is interface on those areas where we may be unclear about where the responsibility lies or how we can be more cooperative together, uh, making sure that it's very clear, like, like you were saying, you know, or you were saying, if there's a, if there's a service being provided here, but the cost is over here, how do we make sure that the, that the accounting for that is absolutely clear? That we work further on defining, um, the roles and responsibilities between the city and the various organizations and that we clean up any, anything that might be considered gray with respect to time and finances.
And I, I believe I can speak with, for both that that's our goal as well. Uh, we would like to get to that point where we know what the rodeo pays for, what Strawberry Days Association pays for, so that the city, city and citizens can know the true benefit. I have not given a, a report, a financial report like this in the past three years. Uh, part of that, the majority of that is I volunteer to do this, so I don't look for additional opportunities to spend my time here. The, and the council has not requested it. So I'd be happy to, uh, to report on Strawberry Days every year as, and, and other things as we define these relationships.
If we could just solve some of these gray areas, if there are any gray areas, whatever will help clear it up and make it more successful for the future. Good. Thank you, and I hope we can do that again. Well, I, I think. Majority is here, so let's move on. Thank you for your time.
Mayor?
Yes.
If it would help, I think Ben and I, uh, could probably sit together in the meeting with Jason.
I love it.
Jason?
Again, I just want to say that the city, we have limits to what the city of Pleasant Grove can and cannot do here. Okay? And we need to respect those boundaries.
Mayor, I just got one last thing. You know, we, we, uh, we couldn't do this without the, the police and the fire and, and Dion. I mean, if it wasn't for Dion, uh, we couldn't, we couldn't get it off. And, and, and that's something that needs to be publicly said. And, and, and I hope that this is a celebration for all, not a few, all. You know, we, we brought the fireworks back to Wednesday night to kick off that. Uh, and then to shut it down on Saturday, you know, we've tried to, what we thought, uh, something I think needs to be cleared up real quick is, is not, and I'm going to get in trouble for saying this, it's not a bunch of hit cowboys that put this on. So I own five businesses and every one of them is very financially stable. And I watch every penny because if you watch the pennies, the dollars take care of themselves. We have come leaps and bounds from people stealing, from people taking. It is, it is no longer a free for all. You know, at first I never understood why so many people loved Strawberry Days. Now, no offense, I hate Strawberry Days.
That'll get you more in trouble than your first comment.
But, but the reason being,
There's the soundbite.
All that I put into that dumb thing, and I've never, ever watched that rodeo in fifteen years. And I'm okay with that because I see the little kids come out of there and that's the key factor to all this. And let's not forget what's key component here. Because if you don't get the children, they're going to become adults and they're not going to come back and you have nothing. And at the end of all this, all you have is your family. So make that a priority over everything. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to review and discuss the September thirteenth city council work session agenda.
The next week, uh, we have a work session. We have two items right now. Uh, one is Bill Exeter, uh, doing a presentation on the Utah State Developmental Center expansion. I believe Mayor D talked to you about, about that a little bit. He wanted to come update the city council on that.
That has something to do with us?
He'll bring it to our attention and tell us what's going on. And yes, it does affect us.
And then the Historic Preservation, uh, Commission will come and talk about the CCC buildings. If you remember that, we had a little discussion on that a few months back on what to do with those. And we turned it over to the Historic Preservation Commission and they're going to give a report on that.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, neighborhood and staff business, Libby? This Saturday?
Saturday, ten to two in the downtown park.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Daniel? Nothing? Dion?
Nothing.
Chief?
Um, sure, just one real quick thing. You may have noticed the fire up on the mountain, um, yesterday.
Yes.
It was actually outside of our jurisdiction, uh, county hand crews, um, well, Cedar Hills.
Right above my home.
Yeah, Cedar Hills initially, uh, um, responded, then county hand crews came in. And, um, then they brought in, um, several air tankers to drop retardant. And then they brought in some helicopters to do some spot, um, drops and stuff. Um, I think the important thing to, to notice there is that that's a tremendous show of force for such a small fire. It's, uh, makes it pretty obvious how important that real estate is and how important it was to them to make sure that fire didn't creep over the top of that and into American Fork Canyon. So it was a real, it was a pretty, um, pretty impressive show of force.
There was a plane that came through and dumped the retardants?
Several, repeatedly and just a pattern. It was incredible.
Up against the mountains.
You look up there in, in the fire area, you can still see the, uh, the stains from the retardant and stuff. So it was a great show of force.
That's wonderful. Anything else? Okay, Chief?
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing. Sherry?
I was going to mention Heritage Jubilee too, but it's been mentioned. We don't have the Walker brothers this year, so, but come anyway.
Why can't we get the Walker brothers?
I don't either.
But they will figure it out. Thank you. Denise? Nothing. Scott?
Nothing.
Tina? Okay, Kathy? Ayanna?
I'll watch my mouth more.
It's kind of hard or strong here. Lynn? Good? Sid? Eric? Ben?
Good.
Okay. Uh, no Platts calendar, I think we're okay. All right, motion to adjourn?
Oh, moved.
Second.
Eric?
It was Ben.
Ben? And Sid, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.